Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for another day that you have given us. I ask you, Lord, to give us the wisdom and the guidance that we need to do the business of this city. Lord, because at the end of the day, we have to depend on you to run things. We have to listen to you, Lord, and you don't make any mistakes. We ask you to help us and guide us in your name we pray. Amen.
All right, we got a shorter work session, but I'll go ahead and highlight some of the agenda items. We have resolutions, reallocating monies for different capital purchases. And capital purchases. Then we have board appointments, tree commission, hospital board, board appointments, library board. Then we have to approve our 24 holiday schedule, city council meeting schedule, accounts payable, invoices, payroll, and the yearly annual election of council president and president of the county. And we do have a executive session tonight, so we'll do that lastly. And the only thing we'll do when we adjourn from the executive and come back, we'll need to adjourn for the regular meeting. So we'll do everything ahead of the executive session. All right, so Alex, can you just give us that highlight on the first item there for the fiscal year 24 budget status?
Yes, sir. In total revenue so far, we've gotten 2.4 million approximately. Of that, 374,000 has been earmarked in different departments, which is on your tablets, the second tab, called department totals. Everybody is spending the way they're supposed to. E and L is a little fast, but that's because they got a lot of contracts up front.
And then with the revenue earnings, like the season coming up, we're going to have the business license renewal coming up, and that's a, that's a anything for us, correct? It's hard to really go.
Yes, sir.
It wasn't ready when I got here.
In January and February, they have to work first.
Okay.
To go ahead.
So that's going to be a big jump coming at that time?
Yes, sir.
All right. Anything else?
No, sir.
All right. We have a discussion necessary for the purchase of fire department vehicle radio and concrete pad adjustments for Fire Station One. And again, I'll reiterate on the concrete pad adjustments. That came from me to Nate. Nate wasn't skipping over anybody as far as the mayor or anything like that. I kind of provided the medium of the AFS individual who wants to do this and quoted it out. So that was on me. Just F for I. So they... You have a, I think we have the quote in the tablets.
Yes, sir.
So I'll hit on both of the things. So the first, the truck radio, that was approved in capital budget last year with the purchase of the truck. Because of the state of the economy and the world and the way things were, it never came in. It didn't get done last year, so it just needs to be rolled into this year to be approved to happen in this fiscal year. So that's, that's all that one was. On the second item, the concrete pad out in front of Station One here, we have had, over the decades, we've constantly had water-related issues underneath the concrete slab at Station One. Reed has done a couple of small sections, one, a couple of small and one medium-sized sections of repair over the years. Whatever's going on underneath there, we don't really know. It's obviously water-related. We don't know if it's water table, if it's drainage, if it's... We don't really know is the short answer, but the only way to truly, really fix it so that the problem is completely gone is probably to tear the whole thing up and redo it, which is obviously fiscally not an option right now. So this is a, a band-aid. When I say a band-aid, I mean a six-month band-aid. It has a five-year no-movement warranty with it. When they came out and looked, the foundation's company, when they came out and looked, they identified 13 void spaces underneath the concrete where our fire trucks roll over every day, rolling in and out of the station. And so this is one of those processes where they go in and they drill a small hole, corehole, pump it full of whatever their product is that will level the concrete out. And it has a five-year no-movement warranty so that if anything, any of those 13 void spaces that they fill moves in the next five years, they come back out and re-level it for free. And that, my hope is that buys us enough time so that we can actually fund probably what ultimately really needs to happen, which is to completely tear up and start over from scratch as far as the concrete pad out front. But that's, this is a, a solution to get us to that point. And, and for the $6,200 that it cost, I thought that was extremely reasonable.
And then like, like Alex said, with the new monies coming in, that 68 can come from the earmark funds.
Correct. Yep, yeah.
But why do you have to pay out of your plan for an improvement at City Hall? Even though it's affecting your department, I don't understand why.
Well, I think this is one of those situations where we all work together to, to get done what needs to be accomplished. I mean, the last thing we want is the concrete falling out from underneath one of our fire trucks and costing hundreds of thousands of dollars to a million-dollar truck because we didn't do some preventative maintenance. So, you know, I, I think this is one of those things that y'all, when we did the tax increase, y'all earmarked money for the fire department, for certain projects, for special projects, for needs that came along, and I, this is one of those things.
So it's coming out of the new money?
Yeah, the, the money that you earmarked for the fire department at the time of the tax, tax increase. Y'all still have to approve it, but...
And it's on here tonight.
That's what I'm used to.
Okay.
I have a question, Nate.
Yes.
Did you address the $795.38 for the radio that needs to come from this year's money?
Not, not specifically.
Because that's going to be a separate item to be voted on, and I just don't want there to be any surprises. If you could address that, that'd be great.
Yeah, so I mean, it's, you have to remember that the initial quote that we got for all of the equipment going into the new truck that was in last year's capital budget was originally quoted during the summertime of '22, because that's when we were working on the FY '23 budget cycle. And then the capital budget for '23 didn't get approved till March, which is what delayed the radio getting here again. And the state of today's world takes 18 months to get anything. And, and, you know, so it just, natural inflation and cost increases, and Alex and I discussed, and she shared with me, that money was, was there and could be joined together with what was originally allocated.
So we're paying for something that never come in?
It's, it's, and it's here now. It finally did come in, and now we need to get it.
Did you tell them to do that?
Wish I could.
So we're just, we just have to approve, approve the increase, Nate?
Yeah, it's, it's approving, rolling the money from capital of FY '23 to capital FY '24, and then adding this.
And it's coming out of earmarked money?
It's coming out of earmarked money. The $800 is as well.
Good. All right, I'm fine.
Because if we don't take it out of the earmarked money, we're going to have to redo the budget before this radio can be approved, because if you guys remember, when we did budget, you guys were at a zero.
Right. Anything else we're approving, that's, that'll be a bonus.
Okay.
I got a crazy question. So how are we, how are we keeping up with it? So how, how often are we calculating the new tax money?
Every time it comes in, in seven days, which would show on the spreadsheet.
I know. So if we're, if we're calculating it every seven days, so we're just taking everybody's certain percentage out every seven days?
Just remember, every time we get an email, Nicole automatically updates the spreadsheet as soon as she gets them.
And then it calculates how much each allocated department or...
Yes, we're almost correct.
Okay, discussion necessary. We have museum roof replacement and waterproofing. If you recall, these are items wanted to on the capital list. We prioritize the capital list, and this will basically get us to both, to items wanted to with the capital money that we have. The actual price, quoted price coming in was well over our estimated last price, so it's going to take that, but we do have the money from when we rolled over CDs, our, our CD CDs, we took out some, most of the interest earned from those CDs in the past, and so we have that money to throw on top of this capital and make it happen.
So what are we looking at total? $150,000 for the museum, museum roof?
The roof is $150,000, the estimate, budgeted estimate, and the waterproofing's $100,000 for a total of $200,000.
Now, Mike, you said around 75, 80, or am I, am I dreaming that up?
We probably, we only, when you add the higher art, there's probably just like coping and everything besides just the roof.
He said coping and what now?
We were shooting for hopefully less than $50,000 just by doing the roof. It just went down.
So the official quote came in, $100,000 higher than estimated?
That's, that's what I'm getting at.
Well, we haven't, we haven't actually done the quotes. That's just going to be the budget.
So, and, and we all know that the museum's got to be fixed. I mean, I walked in there and it's, it, it needs some attention.
And that was the prioritized list purpose too.
So here, here's what I'm getting at. When we do this and we spend this money out of capital, Alex, where are we at in the capital fund?
You're done for the year, sir.
That's kind of what I thought.
So that's what, yeah, that's what we prioritize.
You guys reallocate money.
Right, okay. All right, thank you.
All right, we have a discussion for proposed implementation of compensating for comp time for city personnel. This has been proposed as in allowing the entire city, e, each city department to acquire comp time.
Because right now, the fire department gets it, correct?
Police don't, y'all, no?
Just fire.
Just fire. So, yes, so just...
I've got some questions after she gets through, sir.
Sure. Ms. J?
Okay. Comp time, it's going to sound like I'm repeating the same thing three times, so just let me get through it, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer it. Comp time, you're basically deferring the cost of paying employee overtime. The employee banks comp time at an hour and a half for every overtime hour worked instead of receiving overtime pay. In essence, we're deferring the cost of paying overtime to the employee. There may be a misnomer here where we're thinking this is going to be a very costly benefit, and I'm going to try to explain to you that if administered correctly, it's really not. It's a benefit to the employee and a cost savings to the city. Fire and police are eligible for up to a cap of 480 hours a year. All other public employees are eligible for a cap up to 240 hours a year. The recommendation would be to do payouts only when you have promotions, because promotions, those are the larger increases that are incurred. As far as the step raises, I wouldn't recommend that. The raises aren't huge raises. It's kind of cumbersome on accounting. It's a, a round downer for the employee, because basically today, most people want to have time off. A lot of people would forego that time and have more time with their families. Again, if it's administered properly, it's not going to become a liability that exceeds a benefit. Okay? That is that in a nutshell. Cassie's here with me if you...
And the UKG system set up to have a comp time implemented easily?
It is, and that's how we can keep it from being a liability, and Cassie's prepared, if you'd like her to, to talk about how it works in UKG.
Go ahead, Cassie.
So the, the regulations as far as comp time goes, we cannot require an employee to take comp time. They, that's, it comes down to a choice that they make. So the employee would be propped in and given the opportunity and said, hey, you have three hours of overtime showing for your work period. Would you like to bank it? If so, you can be, you can split it up and pay, take pay for two hours and bank one, or you can take all three, or however you want to split it up. If you take one hour and put it into the bank, your time in the comp time bank will go up to an hour and a half, because it's accounting for that time.
It's one point part of one.
Exactly. So would that be in the case? No supervisor can make an employee take comp time. That's the reason why it has to be the employee's choice. We can't require that they take comp time. But there are a lot of situations where the employee would much rather, instead of being paid overtime, maybe they want to leave early on another day, but not use their sick time. They got a doctor's appointment, they need to leave an hour early, so they do that.
But that still can be approved or denied by the department head or supervisor or whatever? That's not technically denying their time off.
Taking their time off, right. So... That's true. If it, they need to try to give it, but if it causes an unusual burden, they can't deny it.
So would that be in the case?
Timeout. Why, why can't a department head not deny being used at that time?
No, they can.
Oh, she said they can deny, okay. I thought you said cannot. I got you.
Yes, right.
But are you obligated to offer it?
No, it's their choice.
No, but, but are you obligated to give them the choice?
We haven't offered any other department other than the fire the choice, and we would like to.
But if a, but if a department head decides that he or she cannot do without the staff, and that everybody would take all of this stuff, that would fall into hardship, then they would be able to not let everybody take the time?
It would be disappointing to hear that that might be the case, but if that's the case, I think we should, you know, honor the, put the department head wrongs. They've got to manage that department. That's my opinion.
My key would be if the department head needs to retain control, so, to maintain service.
So with comp time, just like with any other leave time that you would use, department heads authorize that time being applied. So that is the, the supervisor, the department head's responsibility to approve that time. Now, what we have talked about before is being able to roll it from year to year, not paying it out every single time, but during times of promotions. So comp time, we can't, it can't expire. We have to pay it out because it's time earned by that employee. So if that's the case, then say they're coming up for a promotion, and the city accuses, they want to go ahead and pay that out, so that what rate they earned it at is the rate they're getting paid at, not a much higher amount.
And it's got to be used in that fiscal year, correct?
It, that's the question.
It needs to, it needs to be used in that fiscal year. We don't need to roll and roll and roll for somebody to have 100-something hours of comp time, and then they decide they just want to use it at one time. That dog ain't going to hunt.
Okay. Yeah, let's...
Going to offer a scenario. So you have...
I'm listening.
You have short staffing in the police department. You've got short staffing in a lot of other departments. Right now, for the next several months, maybe it's difficult to take off that time. The supervisor can't let them. If it rolls, then at a time that they're better staffed, they would be allowed to take that time. So that's, that's a way to, to think on it.
I, I, I hear what you're saying, but if you roll it and keep rolling and keep rolling, you don't put a cap on it, we will be in a bind.
We have a cap.
There's a cap.
Can I say something? All right, say, say you're a police officer and you're getting comp time. You can have up to 480 hours, okay? So you're at the end of the year.
For the whole year.
For the whole year. You're at the end of the year. Like I, you've used it all except you've got 20 left. You can roll 20, but the next year, you're only going to still have 480.
So you can only earn 460 that next year?
Exactly.
It's never going to go over that cap?
It's never going to grow, like if they...
But I do like the idea that that person goes to a promotion, they need to cash it out, or how does that process work when we make, cash it out or whatever?
I do with comp time today.
So the, as far as cashing it out, it's an action that the city goes in and takes. So we would go in...
Are they literally getting paid for all that?
Exactly. They get paid out for the time. So if, and that's, that, whatever your determination is as far as if we're paying out at promotions, then at that time, when somebody gets a promotion, their bank is going to show the time that they approved. And if it's 60 hours, they'll be paid out 60 hours, and there'll be an adjustment to their bank.
So what about when we, if you were to choose to sell it back to the city? Is that an option?
No, because it's, it's actual time earned, so it's time worth.
So they can't sell it back to the city, so we're going...
We have to pay.
We're going to pay it, okay. So we would pay it at their normal hourly rate?
Exactly.
Not, so say, you've got comp time all the way from July to August, and you get a pay raise in September, but you want to cash it in at December. Which pay rate you going to use?
It would be, it would be the new pay rate.
That, that ain't going, guys? We need to table this and think about it.
But we can cash out before the promotion?
I can't support this right now.
I agree. We need to table it for the...
That's fine, but she's, she's agreeing with you in your, in your point is, we're talking about cashing out. If there was a promotion in September, they would cash out on their comp time at their, before promotion rate?
I was right.
And there's options.
Yeah, see, see...
Nate, y'all, y'all... The recommendation from the finance office would be to pay it out before any pay raises or pay adjustments, so that they're getting the check with the lower amount.
Yeah, and then you go back to earning the higher amount, earning it after the promotion.
That would be our recommendation.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Whatever way you obviously fit, again, it can be utilized as a benefit if what you're saying is some of the department heads aren't buying into it. It's, it's okay. It's just another benefit.
No, I think it should be based on, should be based on the rate at which it was earned.
Right, exactly, exactly. I think we're saying the same thing.
But I think... That would be fine. That's, that's an option. It's just a manual adjustment.
But I get what Nate is saying too, because if, if they're banking the time, and then say something happens and everybody wants to cash out their time at one time, we, we hadn't budgeted for it. So that's, that's what he's saying. We, we don't have the money to put aside, so there's no way of knowing, because you can't tell people when to cash out, or you, you know, there's just no way of knowing. So I see what he's saying.
I think the department head definitely needs to have had the final say. They may try, and it may not work out. You know, it may not work out that people, their people really want the time off.
And then too, you know, we have some departments, and I'm just going to add first office for an example, you know, they're shorthanded, so they may be getting a lot of overtime, and you know, so, but how would her people feel if, you know, I banked all this time, like I'm tired, I really want to take this time off, and then he denied my time, and it's, it's my time. So what happens, you know, what happens then?
I think that, that's a test, Bob, because I think they know that anyway.
Yeah, you see what I'm saying, though?
But it's not only people having vacation time, they've got to run, now they've got to run comp time.
Yeah.
But I mean, we're not, we don't have to vote on this tonight.
Yeah, that's just...
Something we have to, we can't...
Just want to define it.
Get all of them.
Can I ask one more question? You said you come up with 480 hours for the police and the fire. That's all the comp time they can get in one year, correct?
Yes.
Okay. What about everyone else? Because you're going to implement this.
Two forty.
Two forty. I guess I missed...
We want to be commercial with our benefits.
Yes.
Ideally, but everybody's got their individual opinion.
How long can, and I'm assuming we've operated this way forever with the fire being the only one to get comp time? Since YouTube, if you remember?
I think so, yes.
As far as I can remember, I, I...
Yeah. All right.
Yeah, we didn't expect you to vote on anything.
No, yeah, I appreciate the information. I like, I like the option. I like the option.
Thanks.
And then the, the best thing is too, the computer system does mostly calculate as far as the hours earned and all that stuff, so.
If I could give two other points, one being that there would be a, an end time, you would know when it was earned. So that's something that's logged, and then you would have an out time which would show when it was used. So there's a, a definite on there. You can't use what you didn't earn. And then the second thing would be, one thing to consider, if you do happen to opt into comp time and using your comp time. So if, if I was making $10 an hour, you're going to pay me overtime at time and a half, that's 15. You also have to pay all of my retirement contributions at 15. You've got to pay all the other things that are affected. If I banked those hours as comp time, then you're paying me at $10 an hour, not at 15. So that's, that's a way that it's a savings to the city.
Yeah. So that, that's where the savings come from. Do you get, do you get that?
I know how comp time works. We, we use it. I'm just, I want to just make sure we can afford it, and we can do what we need to do with it, and it's fair across the board, is all I'm saying.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you all for the information. All right, we have a discussion about federal state requirements for reporting of car allowance. Who's that, Alex?
That's Janie.
I'm back.
Okay. All right. This was kind of a last-minute thing. I've got the details that I have not had a chance to share with our city clerk, and I will do so. We reached out to matching in the chest, our auditors, and asked the question because we did not want to, we wanted to ensure that we were not underreporting wages. And when I'm talking about wages, I'm talking about FICA, I'm talking about what we're required to pay social security and Medicaid, okay? So basically, in a nutshell, this is going to be a lot shorter than that last one. I'll listen. The response was in favor of not taxing our police officers due to the narrow yet significant exceptions. However, they recommended, and I've discussed this with Chief up here, and they think that we need to update our use of vehicle policy. I have all the details. I'll forward that email to Ms. Lambert and police chief. That's the notification that due to the narrowness of the general exceptions, as long as they're not using the vehicles personally, they can only commute to their homes and residences and come, come back and go to work.
Yeah, so I, I mean, y'all didn't do that. I mean, I didn't know anything about this one, so.
Okay, so that, that's it. Any other questions? The details will be coming.
Yeah, we'll just get more details on that.
But there is imputed value to non-emergency personnel who have vehicles, right?
Yes. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Discussion regarding various animal shelter fees.
This is rather sudden too, but in a recent discussion with Ms. Lambert, we were discussing about possibly raising the adoption fee to $120 for canines and $18 for cats, and the reason for this is to try to keep up with some of the bedding, particularly spay neuter. She, Ms. Lambert, we did pricing from Alabama's spay neuter. The pricing for shelters, 501(c)(3)'s, et cetera, were just sort of blanketed, I think. I have tried to reach out to the directors of people to date, but they don't include like anesthesia, antibiotics, and some things. They've run it up a little bit. Pricing to date has been between, well, I would say for spay, a medium-sized dog would be $130 to $200 if there's any complications that's with discounts. Neutering dogs typically $200 to $160, depending on weight. Everything is weight-based. That determines the amount of anesthesia and other drugs the animal may need. Most vets are not housing animals overnight, so that actually saves a little money. But I did do a simple straw poll with all the people that have come in lately for a, we've been partnering with Toyota Silicon as we've had a big uptick in traffic. And as the potential adopters came in, I did ask them what their feeling was on this, and most people, it wasn't an issue at all. So that was something I just wanted to bring before all of you. The other thing that I'd like to discuss is the reclaim fee, because I was told initially it was $40 by former staff. Alex did some research and found that the last amount that was listed by the city was $20 and then a $10 impound charge. I'm curious to know from the police aspect what it costs just in terms of labor, gasoline, to go get a dog, bring it, because I know on our side what it costs. And we're talking to people to do an intake on an animal. There's several vaccines that gets, and that immediately puts us over this $20 mark, I mean, right away. So I've actually unwittingly charged some people $50. I do think that's something we need to discuss, and I would also like to have a discussion with the police on how to handle some of the replays kind of safely. We did have somebody come in just yesterday that was incredibly heated, and it was a very difficult situation for a few minutes, and upset a couple other people that were there adopting, so that's something I would like, something I would...
I'm running behind you.
Yeah. And I know there's been all these posts and stuff about we have co-red and all those things, but, you know, that's, you know, we, we know how to do that. We, we got that addressed and stuff.
We got that addressed, okay.
So what do you recommend we charge? I think for me, I would just support your recommendation as far as what we should be charging as far as reclaiming.
Yeah, I just don't know. Like I said, I'm curious to know what it takes on your side. You know, just to go out, capture the dogs out of the traps, reset the traps. I know that Amanda has told me that in one neighborhood, she has, I guess, confirmation from some people that actually live there, that people are letting dogs out there trapped. So it's multiple times.
But the key though is your cost. We want to make sure that the animal shelter's not losing money.
That's right. So I would just, you know, I don't think people are going to pay more than $80 for a kitten or a cat. I just don't.
Well, I think we need to give you the flexibility to make sure you're not losing money.
Okay.
Right.
That's appreciated.
Okay.
So we didn't take any formal action on that, or?
Do you need information?
I can give you... You were voting on it tonight.
Yeah.
That's what we talked about.
Was it $50?
Yeah, that number is $50?
And then $130 for kids.
Yeah, what she stated, that number should have been.
And then the $10 impound, you know, day-to-day.
So that's on everybody.
But if it costs you more than 50, do we got, we need to vote on it again, or can we give her latitude? But if it costs you more than fifty, do we gotta, do we need to vote on it again, or can we give her latitude to, to?
I guess if you say, if you say that you're losing still after this increase, and say you got a couple months of data to compare to, then just come out like you bring it out and say, hey, uh, that's, we need to increase it again.
Okay. Or do you think it needs to be increased now, should we change the price?
Yeah, but I mean, this is.
The other question I put before you all is if I have a family that's got multiple animals that were picked up, I gotta control. You know, and like I have one woman that had five there, and she only decided she would pay for three. So, um, you know, that's an interesting scenario too.
Yeah.
So.
Just see how many you can get her up to, and then you give her all of the money.
And they'll be back at my door, so.
Yeah. Okay, well, we appreciate the, the information, and like I said, it's on here to vote on tonight.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, discussion on potential establishment of a city food truck park. Is that you, Steve?
I guess Alex and I.
And possible ruler?
Alright. Go ahead.
So, what we've talked about, you know, with the food trucks, it started out as kind of the wild, wild west, people showing up everywhere. Um, City Hall is basically putting limitations on where they can show, show up and what they need in order to be there, which made it difficult for some of the people. And now, we got a few little private areas that's trying to wrangle them in and charging astronomical amounts of money. So, we want to encourage the business of food trucks in Silicon, so what we talked about is making, was it four or five spots?
Four, seven on your tablets.
Yeah. We went, Alex and I went out there and looked, and you can fit four to five food trucks on the south end of Noble Park next to the church. Um, we would allow them to park on, inside the park, in between the parking areas that we have in the track. And they can come to City Hall, they will get their letter of permission out of a form letter that's gonna be stamped. They're gonna pay a minimal fee, seventy-five dollars a day, or?
Yeah, we're discussing seventy-five dollars a day or four hundred dollars a year in City Hall, but I'll just retract that.
Okay.
Can you gonna give them an option to either or?
Yes.
So, the seventy-five would be just for the?
Just for one day.
Just like if you rented the park?
Say you wanna test the waters in Silicon, seventy-five.
With liability on the city, without being city property, since it's renting, I guess that'll kinda, I mean, what are we looking at with liability?
I mean, we rent pavilions and stuff every week.
So, that's, that's what it'll be like.
It would be covered under our general liability insurance.
Okay.
I, I love that idea. And we get, now, this right here, this would take away from them having, if they wanted to go set up somewhere on a private property, they'd be doing what they're still doing, is pay that high amount. This right here, they could pay the four hundred dollars for the year, and they can sit there all year long.
And that's your thing is once, once we sell four to five spots.
I was about to say, will it be reserved for that person if they pay it full or not?
Then, then we're full.
Spot two is only for that food truck, and that's it.
And then, but they can still go to Central Park when you're having an event, if they're getting by.
Yeah. Well, still, you know, we shut down our food truck events for the winter. But, um, when we start up in spring, we'll do the same process that we determined that this year worked.
Can we have something in this resolution or whatever it comes up that, say, somebody buys, uh, I say Seafood Queen, I see you here. But, uh, uh, Seafood Queen's buys four hundred dollar spot, they, they doing something else, don't show up. And then we say, alright, let's do, somebody else won't see him, we got a waitlist of people. And we say, alright, can we have something in there that allows us to give their spot away to somebody for that day until they decide, alright, I'm coming back next week, and then we put them back at their spot?
Yeah. And you would track that through City Hall?
And we would track that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause they'll have to let you know what day they plan to be there anyway.
So, what we'll do on the parking reg side is make sure it's clean, have trash cans available, fix picnic tables over there. To me, it's a really good spot, cause you can pull straight up in your car, you can eat in the park, you're visible for all twenty-one traffic. So, I think it's a really good spot. And if it goes as well as we think it will, then we may try to offer it maybe Veterans Park or somewhere else, you know, on the other side of town.
Good job, Alex and Steve. Alex?
I got a question, Steve, before you leave.
Yes, ma'am.
I had a couple people still calling me. I know we never did get another update about the South Highland Park, so what's more?
South Highland Park, um, we're still waiting on the utility board to move electrical. We can't do any lighting or anything until they move the electrical.
Is it a schedule or a timeline on there?
I, I've talked with, with them numerous times. Um, we've set the spike where we want it put. Um, it's on their list. As you know, they're redoing some major lines going through Silicon right now. Um, we, we're painting and doing the paint on the inside and replacing the tables this fall. As you know, we just had our first frost, so grass finally quit growing, so we can focus on projects like that. But as soon as Eric and his department gets the overhead power line moved, where we have power right there next to the building, we'll start running our lights and the reception.
But you do have plans to do some other stuff that you can do without the power?
Yeah, we'll do the painting and all that first.
Okay.
Cool. Thanks, Steve.
So, are we okay with those, the fees that we talked about, seventy-five a day and a hundred a year?
I'm good with it.
You can put it on next, next gen?
That's right.
Yeah, I agree.
Late ten, it's gonna be up?
Start, Alex.
Steve, when do we wanna start this?
As soon as you're ready, ma'am.
Okay.
So, that means even if they wanted to do it, oh, so?
We need to do it December first, cause you guys will prove it on November twenty-first.
Yeah.
So, it'll be like from January to December?
Would be the, with the four hundred would be.
Okay.
Alright.
And we would make sure they have their health certificate and everything.
Right, okay.
We don't have to worry about them anymore.
And maybe you should give them something to hang in the windows just so when Steve ride by, you know, if you don't have your thing and you're not authorized.
Yeah, we can do that. And we do, um, coordinate quite frequently between me and Steve, um, between these parks and the food trucks and all that stuff.
Okay, that's all we have on the work session.
I don't see the animal shelter on the agenda tonight, so that's not, that's not on the agenda for tonight. I don't see it. So, it was just for discussion, it'll be on the next agenda?
No. Vote on.
I don't saw it. I scanned it four times and I did not see it.
I don't.
Nope.
Yes, no?
Can we get a, can we get a break?
Yeah, that's fine.
I have a question.
You gonna add it?
Yes, sir.
I got one question. Okay, on item like fifteen, it says that Amy Price vacated her seat. She did not vacate her seat. And I think it says the same thing for Shirley Spears. They didn't vacate it, their term expired.
Can you fix that at the same time?
Yes, sir, we will. Thank you.
That's fifteen and sixteen. Thank you. Alright, we'll take a short break, and when those get corrected, we will begin our, our actual meeting.